Chose four o'clock and we have. We have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Everybody received copies of the minutes from our previous five eighteen twenty twenty one regular meeting. Were there any questions, corrections, comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Garing, seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we'll now move on to approval of vouchers. Today we have manual checks in the amount of fifty nine thousand three hundred ninety nine dollars fifty five cents. And computer checks twenty seven thousand five sixty five fifty seven. For a total voucher approval of eighty six thousand nine sixty five twelve. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment?
I'll do that.
Councilman McCarty?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, we'll now move into our public comment section. Mr. Styles.
So if anyone has public comments, I think everybody on is either with the news or staff or Kimberlin. Hi, Kimberlin. But if anyone has any public comment they'd like to make or anybody in the room, Zach, you want to give us?
I'll give a quick update. Um. So the hike and bike trail is completely done. We've got to um just have some seating left. They got some piles of dirt laying around, some little kind of fine tuning, but um. As far as use, all the traffic control is pulled. It's it's completely open to the public now, so um and I've seen still continue to see a lot of people out there using it, so that's exciting. Uh, the highway job, we poured a hundred and seventy five yards this morning on the south side of the highway and actually got the vast majority of what will be the turn lane poured today, so. Um, if we can get the weather to continue to cooperate with us a little bit, the intersection is pretty close to being ready to go. They just got to get it formed up and then a little more on the onto the east there and then that'll be that'll be done for the for the turn lane there and we'll switch over to the north side, so.
What uh what's secure time uh in terms of opening up the intersection?
Yeah, typically, uh, we would see somewhere about seven days. Um, with K dot, it's a little different because um we just have to take uh some um beams, they call them, and and we have to get those. Broke to see what the what the strength is of the concrete before we can open it to um to traffic, but typically it's going to be somewhere about seven days. Um, I did take beams today, so that'll give us a little bit of an idea. How quickly it might cure out so that, let's say, on the other end, before we get ready to open it up, we might be able to open it before seven days and it just kind of depend on what we see out of these out of these first beams.
Well, not so much uh concerned about how, you know, the shortening the number of days, just getting the concrete board, you know, that's the main thing and. You know, it's kind of long term, short term.
Right.
Want to make sure it's done right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So. And appreciate the way you guys have been staying on top of these projects and uh, you know, I know there was, speaking of concrete, there were some concrete issues early on in the uh in the trail process, but I think that uh. You're uh, you kind of helped the contractor get to get where they need to be.
Some of those issues and have not had any issues since then, so.
Right. So that's great.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? All right. Thank you.
Exact. Thank you, Zach. Any other public comment?
Here to be here.
Okay, well, we'll move into our business section. Uh, first item up is item E one, concrete crushing revisited, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so February, we we approved a concrete crushing bid for asphalt paving and maintenance. Uh, they were low bid of the three bidders we received and we had votes and APAC also submitted bids. Uh, APM asphalt paving maintenance has bid with sixty thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Um, we we awarded that bid then based on them being the lowest, but um. It was conditioned on meeting quality standards and then also meeting a timeline of June thirtieth. Uh, and they've they've notified us that they are not going to be able to meet that timeline. Uh, they offered a subcontractor with that uh to complete it where they thought maybe they could do that, but uh subcontractors had some issues with quality control. Uh, this is the same, this is the same group that was uh doing the crushing for Marion County and that they've had quite a few problems with some of the stuff that the subcontractor is has crushed, so. Uh, after reviewing that, we're recommending that, well, we we basically told APM that we wouldn't be, we'd be looking at going on to the next low bidder. Uh, with votes construction and Dale Dahlke contacted votes construction about the potential to move the project up. Um, it sounds like they're gonna be able to complete the job in ninety days. Dale, is that?
I think so. Um, they talked like their schedule was freeing up here shortly, um, but you know, without having a. Uh, a positive answer for them, like we we can go with it. I they. Couldn't commit until we go through this process, but yeah, I talked like they could work us in fairly soon.
Okay. And so they're they're going to hold their bid price, which was seventy one thousand nine hundred, uh, which is was you know, pretty significantly higher than the low bid, but. Um, this may be a case where you kind of get what you paid for. Um, so what we did, what we're talking about doing with this was paying for it out of special highway funds. Um, we're looking at probably based on kind of what we have available and what we ended the year with last year of having funds of a hundred and eleven thousand, a little over a hundred and eleven thousand. Um, so the seventy one nine uh contract price would leave us with about sixty thousand for other projects that we want to do. Um, so it's, you know, fair amount of money, but. We also have the ability to do that. And then, of course, we originally talked about the street apartment maybe being able to sell approximately four thousand tons of material. Um, and so if if we do end up doing that, we would put that money that from what we've sold back into the special highway fund so we can continue doing projects with it, so. Uh, what we will be looking for today is is permission to to move forward with contracting with votes, votes crushing on the concrete crushing and a total cost of seventy one thousand nine hundred.
Okay, any questions? For Matt or Dale?
I guess that maybe to clarify or maybe ask a question, you know, we don't know the exact tons until we're done, um, so that. We have a unit price per per ton and so that number could, I mean, we could stop at a certain number also. Um, I'd like to just crush the whole pile because it's grown since February a little bit, so. There's different ways we could approach that, but that number could grow if if we're allowed to do that.
My main concern would be to avoid the situation that the that the county got themselves in.
Yes.
And it sounds like uh, that's uh, that's. You feel more comfortable with with votes being able to deliver a clean product?
Yes, and you know, your gut tells you one thing the whole time, and that was my main concern the whole time, using somebody else that frankly I didn't know a lot about, but they reassured me, oh, it'd be fine. They, you know, get all the metal out, they do the best they can, but. But then, yeah, when something blows up like that and happens with the county, um, you really start rethinking it and then, given the situation we're in with timeline and everything anyway, it just kind of worked out to. Go with number two, basically. So I and I feel totally comfortable with votes.
They've done work for.
They did, yeah, then you were hard pressed to find any wire in the finished product.
That's the key.
So can we do our? Pass this in a way that allows us to just take out the whole pile instead of the?
Yeah, you can approve it as. Uh, the per unit cost, which was. Seven fifty a ton.
And I don't think they had a mobilization.
No mobilization on there. There's APAC ad mobilization, but they did not, so.
Just it just seems to me, once you have them out here, you'd be way better just getting through it.
It it's best that way. Um, the last time they crushed for us, they had a mobilization fee, but then they cut that uh way down. Because of the amount that we did at the time, then this this time they bid with no mobilization, so.
Just trying to grab that. So their bid was. Okay, so for uh votes, their bid was seven fifty uh a ton for three inch concrete, seven fifty for one and a half inch and then asphalt at five fifty a ton, so. If you approved it to crush the concrete, it's uh seven fifty a ton and asphalt at five fifty a ton, that would allow us to. If we surpassed those numbers to go beyond that and just crush the whole pile.
Is that a motion somebody care to make?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to uh to approve the contract with votes crushing for the stated amounts for concrete and for asphalt. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we will proceed. Thank you, Dale. Okay, we have two Elcon invoices today, one for one thousand nine hundred ninety four dollars fifty eight cents. And a second for one thousand sixty four dollars eighty five cents for a total of the two of three thousand fifty nine dollars forty three cents. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So the first invoice, we did some uh work at the water treatment, well, actually both of them are for the water treatment plant. Uh, they had a backwash tank that needed some electrical work done in it. Of course, that took quite a bit more uh time using actual electrician, like actual electrician time uh to do that work. Uh, so that was the larger one of the two, uh, one thousand nine hundred ninety four fifty. Uh, and the second one was they had to do some some also some work in the water treatment plant. They were installing some charge lights and then also some uh. Materials were involved with that, too. These were the high highlights in the in the base, so. Uh, that took a little bit more work than you, you know, a standard kind of thing, and that was one thousand sixty four dollars and eighty five cents. Uh, together again, three thousand fifty nine dollars and forty three cents.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve these two Elcon invoices for payment.
I make a motion.
Councilman McCarty.
Second.
Second, but Councilman Driggers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, motion is approved. Those invoices are approved for payment. We'll now agenda item three, strategic planning work session on June twenty two, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, just wanted to see if we can get a workshop session for the twenty second of June to finish up the strategic planning stuff. Uh, we've gone through it a couple of different times. I think we've got it pretty well, pretty tight, but I think uh just having one more session to maybe assign some of that work and talk a little bit more about everything in there and finalize it, I think that would be um. Will be beneficial for us, so um, I'm looking at the twenty second of June, which is an off Tuesday for us. Uh, kept it on Tuesday. I know that works pretty good for you, Barney.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. So, yeah, I just wanted to see if that was a possibility, and it also might be a possibility that we may want to look at that uh same date for a budget workshop, so maybe we would. Want to look at that as well, but uh we'll see kind of where we're at on the budget workshop piece. I'm not sure how that's going to shake out as we'll talk about later uh with budget things, so. Uh, but now we're just looking for the strategic planning work session on the twenty second at four o'clock.
I am out of town that week.
Okay, okay.
And that's in Florida.
Okay, so maybe we need to look at a different, I forgot about that. Um. Yeah, we could look at the week after that potentially. Actually, we've got a regular meeting that day, I think.
Our regular meetings in June are the first and the fifteenth. And then we have uh.
July first, we have our meeting got moved to July first. Um, so the twenty ninth would be an option if you wanted to keep it on a Tuesday.
I'm open the twenty ninth.
It's for. Renee, the twenty ninth.
I think so. If I had to, could I log in through Zoom?
Yeah.
To do that?
Yeah, that's right now. Wrap up of the uh of the uh APPA on Tuesday, or I would say, if it wasn't, I would zoom in, you know, but. But it doesn't work for Tuesday, unfortunately.
Yeah. We can, we can do the twenty ninth if that works for everybody.
It's fine.
Okay. Uh, probably ought to take action to formally set that date and time so that we can publicize that.
So um, would somebody care to make a motion that we hold a strategic planning work session on Tuesday, June twenty nine?
I'll make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we are on to uh the added agenda item, FSA matching contribution, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So um. Last year, the council opted not to participate. Well, typically what the the city does is match FSA contributions for employees, voluntary flexible savings account contributions for medical expenses. Up to five hundred dollars. Uh, last year, they, you guys put a pause on that because of the unknowns with COVID and the potential financial situation being what it was. Uh, that really never materialized, um, and now it's open enrollment session again uh for our plan year, and so we had a lot of people asking if whether or not we would go back to doing that. So wanted to bring to the city council, I told them I would do that, uh, five hundred dollars was what it was and it will match up to five hundred dollars. Um, so someone did two hundred, you don't match two hundred. If someone want beyond that, it would be beyond, maybe you just do the five hundred, so during the nineteen twenty plan year, so that would be the twenty nineteen budget. And then twenty twenty budget, they, we matched contributions of twenty three employees. That was eleven thousand five hundred uh for the twenty twenty one budget, which we adopted last year. Um, we did include the the funds for the match in that, so it is it is budgeted in there if that's something you want to do. Uh, if we're going to do it, you know, the plan year overlaps into the next year, so we'd want to look at um, you know, twenty twenty two, we'd have another option to look at that again, so. We'd have to factor that in, but um, I'm I'm recommenda- my recommendation would be to uh reinstate that city match up to five hundred dollars for participating employees. Um, but certainly we want to put it before the council to see if that's something you'd be interested in doing.
Okay, any questions?
I move reinstate the match.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman McCarty, motion by Councilman Driggers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the uh five hundred dollar match is reinstated.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much on behalf of the employees. I know everyone appreciates it.
As it turned out, you know, fortunately for all of us, the uh, the uh, you know, what we predicated that decision on last year didn't turn. Never, never materialized, which was, which was good news and, you know, we appreciate that the city employees participated in that. In those decisions that we made last year, so uh, you know, I'm happy that we can reinstate it this year. Okay. Now move on to agenda item five, twenty twenty two budget priorities, Mr. Styles.
Hey, so I'm gonna share this out so everyone can kind of see it. Um, so what we've got here, I put together a little bit of a uh. Presentation on on the budget is kind of where it sits and sort of how how we relate to everything else and what all goes into it, and I want to get some feedback from you as we put it together. Uh, right now I've gotten back all of the uh requests from departments, so we kind of know expenditure side where things are. We're doing our uh. Revenue projections as well. We don't have some some key information from the county yet, but that usually doesn't come until a little bit later in the month. Uh, they have until the fifteenth of June. Uh, and also walk you through what Senate Bill thirteen that passed, uh, got rid of the tax cap, but it also puts some interesting things on there for us to deal with, so. Uh, just wanted to kind of give you an update on kind of where we're at and what things look like, so. Uh, when we look at kind of the total property taxes for the city of Hillsborough, somebody in City Hillsborough, uh, it's one one hundred and eighty four point six oh seven mils, so that's the property tax, and this is sort of how it, this is how it breaks down. Uh, so the city is forty three, you know, twenty four percent of that, forty three mils, forty three and a half mils. The county makes up the biggest portion, seventy six. Um, mill, a little over seventy six mills, they're forty one percent. School district makes up another third, uh, it's sixty one, almost sixty two mils. The state's got one and a half mills in there and then the extension, uh, when we move to a regional extension office, they have their own tax levy now, so. Um, and I think that's a three county extension uh district, so it is one point seven mils, about one percent, so that's kind of how the tax. Makeup looks for for residents here in Hillsborough, so what that actually means in dollars and cents, we looked at the ma- median home values, so the average home in Hillsborough is eighty eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, according to the census data, so their average, the average property tax bill is about a little over eighteen hundred, almost nineteen hundred dollars. You can kind of see how that breaks out as to what people pay for what what portion of services and what they what they get, so um, the city of Hillsborough there is the first one at forty four, four hundred and forty four dollars. Uh, then the county makes up the biggest chunk at seven hundred and seventy five, school district, and then you've got the the state and the extension there, so you can kind of see. That, you know, when you talk about the total amount of taxation for your property in Hillsborough, the city is is one of the smaller portions of that. Mill levy comparison, because everybody always does it. I don't think it's particularly fair a lot of the time, but um, we've got, so um. I took all the county or the cities, communities in in Marion County, so you can kind of see where we where we are as compared to our neighbors here in the county. Obviously, you know, at forty two mils, we're we're the lowest, one of the lowest ones. Obviously, the biggest community as well, so that, you know, what we offer is is quite a bit different than, say, Durham, which has a lower mill levy uh or Lost Springs, um, so those aren't, those aren't as, you know, full service of communities. Uh, Marion is usually the one that comes up when we talk about discussions, at least when I talk to people and and that, you know, here's here's what the property taxes are in Marion, they're quite a bit higher there in Marion. And quite a bit higher than Peabody as well, so those are kind of the bigger sound, bigger communities, but I, you know, what I like to do is pull a a community that sort of looks like us in terms of. You know, the assessed valuation, um, relative population, utilities, um, so really, the the one that matches up the best is the city of Kingman. Uh, they're actually KPP members, so we know that their their electrical situation is pretty similar to ours. Uh, their population is slightly larger, but not a lot larger. Um, they offer similar sized utilities and their evaluations are roughly the same. Um, so Kingman's a good, good peer community for us to look at.
So how does that compare to when you get into like county versus city?
Well, yeah, I just grabbed the city stuff. We can pull the whole county thing.
Well, and and services.
Sure.
Does does the county do the EMS services for Kingman, or do they have their own and things like that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I didn't pull the, I, they don't, I don't think they do EMS services. I tried to match.
City does.
City services.
Okay.
As best as possible, yeah. I think the, I think Kingman's a pretty good match uh based on kind of what they do and what we do. Osage was another one that kind of came up. Uh, they're slightly slightly different on the utility situation, but they do have uh similar utility, similar size, similar uh valuation, so. Those are, those are pretty good comparisons. If you're going to compare somebody, those are probably better than looking at our neighbors here in Marion. Just from, you know, what we provide and and kind of what the size is, so uh from that perspective, Hillsborough looks pretty good. I mean, we're we're pretty, pretty on point with where you'd expect to expect somebody to be, so. Let's talk a little bit about Senate Bill thirteen. Um, so this is something that passed at the end of the legislative session. It removed the tax lid, which is a good thing. I think the tax lid. While while intention, good intention, I don't think was ever really worked like it was, like it was supposed to. Um, there are lots of little things in it that made it where you could move out of it and and do different things, so uh that's gone now. So what what they have now is something called uh. You know, revenue neutral rate or an R N R, uh, which is going to be required if we exceed that revenue neutral rate, which means that the tax rate for the current year would generate the same amount of property tax revenue. That was levied in the previous year using this year's current evaluation, which is a little bit goofy. Basically, it means that instead of looking at the mill rate, you're looking at the amount of dollars that it generated. Um, and so if we exceed the same, even if you grow, even if your assessed valuation grows, you still can be out of the revenue neutral unless you adjust your tax rate down.
So pretty much you're going to be out of revenue neutral every year.
Pretty much most people will be, yeah. I mean, that's, that's kind of the thought. So what what that means, if you go out of that, you it triggers a, it triggers a uh revenue neutral hearing that you have to have, so. Our normal process, you know, we get the valuation from the county clerk, June fifteenth, nothing changed there. Um, before we had to have a, you know, budget hearing before the twenty fifth or the twenty fifth of August, which is where where it normally would be due. Um, you have to have it ten days back from that, so you know, we normally would be out the door sometime in in August, first meeting of August, typically speaking. Um, but if we we think we're going to exceed the revenue neutral, we must notify the clerk, the county clerk now by July twentieth. Um, so basically for any fund that levies property tax, we basically have to have it finished by the twentieth of of July now, um, so it moves it up about a week. Um, because of how our meetings land, that we really need to have it finished by first of July, which means we'll have a couple of weeks to kind of figure it out. So when you do that, normally you would have to have your budget hearing and be out the door August twenty fifth. Now you can, if you're exceeding the revenue neutral rate, you have to hold a budget and a tax hearing uh between the twentieth and September, twentieth of August and September twentieth, so now it extends out into August and September. Um, the county clerk has to uh mail a direct notice to every taxpayer that is affected by this, so they'll get a, you'll get a letter in the mail. Um, they they do allow for all the entities that are exceeding the revenue neutral rate to be included on the same notice now. Uh, originally, when they put this legislation together, everyone was going to have to send their own, uh, which gets expensive. Um, the state's going to pay for the, for the notices to go out the first two years. And then it becomes the county's issue, uh, who will eventually pass it on to us, I'm sure, uh, because that that just makes logical sense. Um, so if we're going to do that, we have to really, you know, hold that that hearing, both a budget and a tax rate hearing between August twentieth and September twentieth, and then we have to have a final decision certified to the county clerk. By October one, the property tax levy, so it shifts the budget calendar, uh, creates another hearing. Um. The idea here is that it's going to be more transparent and that, you know, we'll, we'll be measuring apples to apples as far as the amount of revenue versus what your mill levy actually is.
Can you do the budget and tax rate hearing together?
Yes.
Okay, just one?
Yeah, well, I think you have to do them, you can do them at the same time, but you have to do them as separate hearings. So and and the part of the hearing is that you have to allow anybody who wants to speak on on behalf of the tax rate to speak on that. It's just just like a regular budget hearing in that sense, you can. You know, everyone has to have the ability to speak about it. So that's kind of Senate Bill thirteen, which kind of it it messes with their timelines a little bit and puts a little bit more pressure on getting things done more quickly. Um, so with that in mind, I kind of want to talk a little bit about what we've done this year, uh, with what twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, has some cost saving things. Um, just so we know what we're looking at for the budget in twenty two. So when we switched everything over into the land bank, we saved about twenty six thousand dollars on property tax that was normally being paid by the general fund, so that's that's a pretty significant chunk. Um, when we moved over to front desk, we ended up losing about twelve hundred dollars worth of other services that we were currently using. Um, so the functionality there, we get. We can replace those services and drop those annual annual fees. Uh, when we switched to Freedom Claims Management for health insurance, we had a broker before, so that was a six thousand dollar fee in addition to what we were paying in the health insurance cost. Um, so we saved that this year by making that move. Uh, our service providers for credit cards, we switched those out uh from P S N was the previous provider to Forte Payments, and I think we'll save about two thousand a year on credit card fees. Uh, we currently, the city pays those credit card fees, uh, some some places pass those on, uh, but we we pay them, which totally fine. Uh, but the way Forte processes payments, it's a different rate, and so I think we'll end up saving about twenty thousand there, so. Right now we're looking at about thirty five, a little over thirty five thousand that we're currently projected to save just from some things we've done this year. Uh, moving into next year, I think we've got a couple of other things and there there's some things we would have to look at doing uh and changing out, so. Uh, the voice, moving to a vo- a voice over internet protocol phone system with the new uh fiber optic going to each of the buildings, I think we could switch over to that. Uh, the moving to a voice phone system is probably about forty thousand dollars, but. With the savings and phone and internet costs, I don't know if you've ever paid close attention to how much we pay for phone service here. It's it's kind of crazy. Um, so I'm estimating, you know, based on that, switching out, uh, we could save about eighteen thousand dollars annually on uh moving to a voice system, so after two years, you would have almost paid for. The cost of the of the transition. I think we're going to save some, some, about three thousand annually, probably a little bit more than that. Policy changing and streamlining we're doing, just internally, operations. Position changes, we have had a lot of people retire and so we've hired, hired in people. And right now, we've got a couple of open positions, so I'm estimating twenty thousand. And the position changes is probably more than that, but that's kind of the conservative number I'm using right now. I think, you know, if and how we fill some of those positions, or if we choose to do something different with those, will be there. Twenty thousand's a pretty, pretty safe number, I think. And then we could also, there's another option, we could do something with moving our publications, our legal publications. We have the ability to charter out the requirements for that. So we can move our legal publications on to our website. We can deem that as our official outlet. There are some things that would still need to be published in a newspaper, depending on what they are. So you don't get out of all of that, but I think about three thousand annually, we can save with that. But in order to do that, we would need to adopt a charter ordinance in order to exempt ourselves from that statute. So a little bit of work there if we wanted to pursue that. We could save, save some money there. So those are some things that we can think about as we move into twenty two. So what I'm looking at for the twenty two budget? Looking at keeping the mill levy pretty, pretty well consistent. We're going to have some increases in a few areas, but I think we'll kind of offset those with some decreases in other areas. Goal is to do a flat mill levy unless you guys tell me we need to cut it or do something, something different. Be happy to keep it, I think we can keep it flat with not, not much issue. Probably not going to be on that revenue neutral thing, but depends on the valuation. If valuation comes back that we've declined or lost some, then we probably will be okay with the revenue neutral. It just depends, and we'll have that number back by June, June fifteenth is when the county has to get that to us. I'm projecting a sales tax increase in twenty two, right now, year to date, over twenty, which was the highest year we had recorded. We're eighteen percent over, so we're killing it in sales tax. Even with Dollar General being shut down for a couple of weeks there, we still turned in one of the best months we've ever had, so. And with Baumgart's coming online, I'm feeling pretty comfortable to say that we're going to be up on sales tax, which is, I think, a good thing. Like to continue that momentum moving forward. Still evaluating the needs for utility rate changes. We previously talked about it when we adopted the twenty one budget. Looking at doing some rate changes this year, but we delayed that. I'm just permanently kind of put that on pause because of the storm surcharge on the electrical. That's in effect, this, excuse me, this month, it starts on this billing that people will have received, actually probably today. So that, that'll start coming up. And so we, we probably need to look at at least water next year, because we will have some things that we'll have to talk about, including the raw water rate, that's going to go up and some other things with that. So we'll want to look at utility rates next year. Really working hard to do better job with equipment replacement and capital improvements. We don't really have very well thought out plans. We have kind of a hodgepodge of what we feel like we need and we have a list of kind of generally where we want to do different improvements, but I really want to get it down and, and focused in a lot better. And that's a goal for me in the next year. So the current budget, what we have in there is eighty thousand for capital improvements, they're sort of just undefined. What happens is we, we have something that comes up and we, we can take it from there. Want to get that programmed out a lot better. We'll probably be seeking a cost of living or, or merit increase, probably not both. I don't know that we'll be able to do both, but looking at that, I don't really have an amount right now. We budgeted in twenty twenty one for a two percent cost of living, but we delayed that until June or July. And so actually, at the next meeting, we'll need to talk about whether or not we're interested in, in enacting that cost of living increase. We've got, we've had a lot of transitions, so we may want to talk about how, how we apply that, what's the most equitable, that, that kind of thinking. So I'll probably factor in, unless you tell me otherwise, some kind of pay adjustment for people in twenty twenty two. So what I really want to talk about are your priorities. So what are the things the council wants to see in twenty twenty two? Are there things that we need to be considering that I need to factor in when we do the budget? Are there things we need to remove, are there things you don't like? What are your thoughts on the wage increases? And I put our strategic plan, you know, our tier goals in there so that we can remember what those are. I like to tie everything back to that if possible. So that's what I'd open up to you guys, just to get your feedback. What do you, what do you want to see next year? Are there things I'm, need to be aware of?
Don't everybody speak at once, you can take turns.
I'd be in favor of going back to a cost of living for twenty twenty two. And I guess I'd ask the question, we have the tier one goals. We don't have really any projects, like capital projects underneath those yet that we would have in twenty twenty two.
Right, nothing, nothing super firm. We, I mean, we are working on the childcare thing and there probably would be potential for something. Not sure what that would look like.
Not sure, and how you plan for it.
I don't know, I'm not, yeah, I don't know what we know exactly.
I think we need to continue the projects that we've got going. The community plaza is important, we need to keep the momentum moving on that. And so.
Yeah.
I know we're going to be starting here this month sometime, doing, pushing some dirt around.
Move some dirt.
You know, it's just one of those things that we gotta, you know, drive stakes in the ground and, 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 you know, move forward and finish things, you know, that we start. And I'm glad that we're finishing the trail project. I mean, that, I'd love to take credit for it, but that actually started before I became mayor, so, you know. But I'm glad to, to be here to see it through and excited about that. And hopefully, there's, there's more of that kind of stuff. You know, there's, I know, Matt, you and I've talked, but I think there may be some street projects that may not be able to, to, to wait. You know, we need to really, I think, do a priority evaluation on, on streets, because I know there's some, especially in this last rain, that took some, took some more damage, you know, that we're already not in good shape. So we need to start thinking about, about that a little bit, that maybe there's some kind of an interim plan between now and, and twenty twenty five, when we get a lot of those other projects paid off. You know, we can start to, we can start thinking about some of that.
Yeah, I think that's really important to, that, that's why doing a capital improvement plan, having that really well knelt down will be helpful in, in planning those exact things.
Projects also that need to be considered is, I think, you know, we've talked a lot about constructing, but there's some deconstructing that really has got to be done. And so I think there's, you know, one for sure project on Main Street. It needs to, to be addressed in, in next year's budget somewhere, somewhere.
I agree with that.
Okay.
It's been a eyesore for some time.
We've also, I don't mean to mon, to monopolize the conversation, but we also just had these, these, the students present those, their projects. And I think we need to evaluate that list of projects and see where that might fall in. I'm thinking, you know, lighting the, the park and in some security cameras. I actually had a, a former resident reach out to me today and said, now that the city's got, you know, the fiber internet system, it would be nice to have some webcams that, for people that are homesick, that they could get on the web and check out what's going on in Hillsborough.
Joel did that for a while at the paper, and a lot of people were actually on there and used it. It was at Main and Grand, discovered intersection there, but it's kind of interesting. There was a lot of people talk, talking online about that, when they were watching what was going on.
So, you know, there, anyway, you know, there, and there are several of those other projects that, you know, financially might not be too, too big of a, of a burden, but.
You, you were talking about the high school projects. If you drive around some towns, the paintings they put on the buildings, they look really nice. And I think that's something that we should think about at places where we can. I was surprised how much it helped the towns look, some of them, when they were pretty, you know, when much going on, it really makes a difference.
Yeah, I think the Chamber of Commerce has been interested in those too.
Really?
Yeah, being a partner in some of that stuff. So, you know, financial piece, maybe, maybe we can spread that out over, over more people.
Create collaborations that involve different organizations and different people and different funding methodologies that, that, you know, all come together and, and, you know, their strength in numbers.
Well, I'm glad the high school did that project, because I think that really, they really have some good ideas and it's, you get a different perspective thing, and I think that's good.
Matt and I did meet with, with Mr. Canole this, this past week and we kind of did an after action review of, of this year's prospects and in, in process. And we've got some ideas, I think we can make it even better next year. And, and one of those is we're going to start a little earlier in the school year. So, so, yeah.
Okay. Anything else we need to think about while we're putting this together? We're kind of keeping everything pretty much.
Well, you know, I don't know where we're, what, in, in the budgeting process, but we're seeing, you know, in, in, in my business, I'm seeing some pretty significant increases in materials and lead times for things. And are we, are we, you know, we, we need to make sure that we're probably being a little, little conservative in some of our estimates for some of those things, because, I mean, you know, it wouldn't take much to get way off on, on a few things and kind of blow the budget right away.
We've seen some, we have seen some interesting things with that. More lead times than costs at this point, but yeah, it's, it's been something we've, we've been keeping top of mind, particularly for utility stuff, so, you know, pipes, water pipes, for example, sewer, sewer repair stuff. We've seen that jump up and had a lot of lead time with the pump at the pool that went down last week. You know, we, normally we could replace that in two or three days, you know, through that supplier, but they told us it was going to be July. So that was why we ended up taking it down to, to Wichita and getting it rebuilt, and they did an awesome job. I want to commend them, they did it in record time, so. But yeah, we've, we've been trying to factor some of that, that in and we're being told sometime next year, it'll go back to something that looks like normal, but I don't know what that is, and I don't think anyone else does either. So, yeah, we're, we're taking that into, taking it into account, but I'm not sure if we can, if we had a crystal ball, we'd be doing a lot better with that. Any other things we need to be thinking about? Okay, so timeline for this, what we're going to need to do. We talked about the stuff today, so that's what we're doing here. And I'm hoping to have an initial draft for you guys to review at the next meeting on the fifteenth. It's going to depend a lot on if the county gets the assessed valuation out before that, we haven't till that day. But I'm optimistic we'll get a little bit of a look ahead of that. Not the twenty second for the work, work session, but maybe the week thereafter if we need that. We set this strategic planning meeting for the twenty ninth, so maybe, you know, we can maybe double up on that if we have to. Determination on July first, you know, if we're going to exceed that revenue neutral rate, that's basically what we're going to have to make that determination. I think that we'll probably be looking at that, but I'm not sure yet. If we don't exceed that, we would have the budget hearing kind of on a normal schedule, so August third would be what we'd be looking at that. If we do exceed the R N R, then we'd have to look at something in between the twentieth of August and the twentieth of September. So pick the seventh of September, it's a regular date after, with that Labor Day. So, you know, that would be kind of what I'd envisioned for that at this point. So I guess that's, that's kind of the rough timeline, that's where we'll see where we're at. It's a little bit of a weird year when they throw a monkey wrench in there, like the revenue neutral thing, but we'll get through it just fine. Like I say, we're in good shape right now and I think we'll have something pretty solid to present to you on the fifteenth.
Again, other than the, the timing issues, I mean, in terms of having a budget hearing, we have a budget hearing every year, you know, so. That's, that's really no different.
Yeah, the, the new thing is the, you know, the revenue neutral tax statements that have to be mailed out to every taxpayer that's affected. That's new, and, and, you know, I think that'll be a costly endeavor for people. And I think that was the idea, that they, they try to scare people off from exceeding the revenue neutral rate by making it more expensive. Don't know, don't know, but that, that's kind of where it's at and we'll, we'll play by the rules and we'll get you a good product.
You know, I, you know, I think the goal is always to do the, to do the most with, with, with the least that we can, right?
Always.
And, you know, but I don't have, I don't ever hear people asking us as a city to do less. So, I mean, in the sense that, that, you know, we want good streets, we want, you know, to have reliable power, we want to have, you know, clean water, et cetera, et cetera, you know, all those things. And, you know, unfortunately, the cost for operating those, those things continues to go up, not down. But I feel good about the moves that we've made in this past year in terms of savings, the way we've been able to, to do things more efficiently. And, and, you know, I know we're going to continue to look at those as we go forward. So my thanks to you, Matt, and, and your staff for, for helping us get, get to those places. Okay, any other comments regarding budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item F, board appointments. There are no board appointments today. And we will now go to city administrators' report. Mr. Silas, back to you.
Thanks, sir. So wanted to make you all aware that the rain event that we had, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, with five inches of rain in a little under two hours, that's a pretty tough volume to deal with. And I know we created some havoc for us, particularly on our drainage. Lost a couple of bridges at the golf course, washed into Ash Street and blew out some, blew out some streets in different places because of the water. I know people had rainwater in basements and things like that. Fortunately, there's not much you can do to build a, a stormwater system that can handle that much that quickly. So we, we just do our best. But we did have some issues with the, the lift station and south lift station at the main, the main lift station that goes out to the lagoons. Anytime we have a large amount of water, we, we end up with a bypass on that. So we've got sewage that leaves the, the, the thing again, moves into the containment there. So we have to notify K D H E anytime we do that. We got it again today, based just, it's just all the rainwater. Whenever that rainwater comes in, we've talked about the I N A problem that we have, and that, that is what that is. So been having some, some bypass issues with that. Of course, we notify, nothing's ever, you know, dangerous or anything like that. No, the public's never at risk, anything like that, but we do have to notify, notify K D H E about that anytime we do it. We do have some upset homeowners, I understand that, I can appreciate it. I've had water in my basement before too. A lot of times, you know, we, they want to, they want to point the finger at the city. It's not usually our fault, especially in the rainwater, but we do try to stay ahead of all those systems and try to make sure it all works. So we're trying to be proactive and prevent those things, but unfortunately, you know, it, it does happen on occasion. Website launch, so we did have that, it's up and running, front desk is also up and running. I think the, the look is good, I think everything is kind of working there. We're pushing more people to use their front desk accounts, and so we're really going to start, start amping that up. We're going to phase out, taking credit cards over the phone here on July first. So everything's going well with that, knock on wood, so everything seems to be moving good, yeah, exactly. EMS building, the county's moving forward, they purchased the building for the EMS facility and we're working on that transfer agreement. Anticipate having that pretty soon for the council to review and go over to the county as well. Rescue Act funds, we saw and received those, so we're waiting for, they, they were like, it's going to be coming, it's going to be coming this week. And they haven't shown up yet, so we'll see how it goes. Utility shut off processes, so we're reviewing a lot of those right now, specifically after hour shut offs. And we've had numerous concerns about how that gets handled currently. There's some safety issues, there's money handling issues. So we're probably going to be bringing something for the council to look at. So we're probably gonna be bringing something for the council to look at in the near future on that. Fiber project continues to move forward. I know they've been slowed because of the weather. There's a lot of, a lot of places in town where they kind of had to stop right in the middle of that, but everything seems to be moving, moving forward. And I think they're still anticipating being done in July, so that'll be, that'll be a good thing. Audit presentation, the audit for twenty twenty will be here, the auditors will be here to present that next meeting on the fifteenth. The trail is complete, as Josh told, or Zach told us this, this today. So everything seems to be good with that. We're gonna be looking at doing a dedication, a trailgate party to dedicate that sucker in late June. Haven't got a date picked out just yet, but we're getting there. Evaluation for me, that the, I've made those changes and sent that around, and also sent you a copy of my self-evaluation, so you have that to look at too. We're gonna give employees the opportunity to do some feedback on that and have that back before the June fifteenth meeting, so you can look at that. And then we'll have, hopefully have an executive session on that fifteenth to go over evaluation there. Got a couple of attachments there for you, so you got the on-call schedule, sales tax receipts, I mentioned that when we talked about the budget. One of the highest months ever for April on sales tax receipts, eighteen percent higher than it was last year, which was really good. So twenty-seven percent higher than twenty nineteen. Upper trend, I think it's gonna be good. Typically, we give higher collections in the summer, which is great, so we're, we're on that kind of, that slope, that trajectory, and then Bomb岗s is scheduled to open in June, so. The last thing is retirement party for Ms. Jan Mysinger, coming up, June eleventh. Jan, why, ask Jan, oh, I had Danielle get you in here, so that you could, this is Jan's last council meeting. I don't know how many council meetings you've been to, Jan, over forty, forty-two years, how many has it been?
I don't know.
I just want to say thank you, Jan, for all your hard work, and forty-two years is a long, long dedication of service to the city of Hillsborough, all the citizens of Hillsborough, and so we're, we're just thrilled to death that you're, you're gonna have fun in your retirement and working at the quilt shop and doing everything else you want to do, so thank you, thank you so much for your.
So what was going on in nineteen seventy-nine when you came on board? Is there anything you remember about, that was going on with the city in seventy-nine?
Well, Grand Oaks, I remember that, was going on, and they had just finished Grand Street, concreting Grand Street, West Grand. And those are the two things I remember.
So that lasted a little while then, because we just redid that last year. Pretty good, huh?
It should have been before they conquered. Looked like they had fishing holes at the.
No, I, I, I remember, yeah, I remember, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Wow, it's just, it's just hard to, hard to think, forty-two years times, uh, times twelve, times two. Plus a lot of special meetings in there. That's, that's the math. So a lot of minutes, so, you know.
A lot of books in there.
Yeah, a lot of books with her name in them and her signature in them.
Well, these come in at seven, and then Jan was here until late hours some nights, I know, you know.
Yeah, it's, and, and to think how many, how many checks you, you prepared. When people want to know what the mayor does, I just say, sign, sign stuff, sign checks and minutes and documents and everything else. So I didn't know my hand was gonna have to be that limber. Jan, you've been, you've been great to work with, and you've been really good to a rookie mayor and that came, came on, and, and you were very patient with me, and I can't thank you enough, especially when I thought, you know, I had all this, you know, really seasoned professional staff, and then Larry goes down about two weeks in. Boy, we were in for it then, weren't we? But we survived, thanks to you, so much appreciated. Any other things we could do to embarrass her, you know?
Yeah, I don't know, I just, it's over a thousand meetings.
Over the thousand meetings, how many mayors did you break in?
Well, really, there's Harold and Dolores and Bob and Lou.
Okay, yeah.
That in and of itself is pretty impressive.
Well, that just shows that you didn't make the job so, so daunting that they all ran, ran for it after one term, right? Yeah. So, so good. You know, again, I've, if, 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 if I could, if I could do it, I'd be racing you to the door. You know, I am looking forward to that time when, when I have a little more control over my schedule, and so really want you to enjoy it.
I will.
And make sure that Ed continues to spoil you every day.
I'll tell him.
That's, that's a new, that's an ordinance that's gonna be, gonna be passed next week, next meeting, we'll pass that ordinance. Thanks. Okay, we'll now move on to council comments. Any, just go around, Councilman Gary.
I just have a question, I just want to make sure I understand, on the city administrator evaluation, is there a point where the council members are supposed to fill that out, or will we just be discussing that?
No, you, you need to, yeah, you fill that one.
As soon as possible, or?
Yeah, before the next meeting. And I can send you another link if that, that would be helpful.
Okay, Councilman McCarty?
If you go down South Ash, I don't know how to put this, but this house looks like a movie set between a Tarzan movie and Maule Paul Kettle at the farm, you know, what I'm talking about? And it probably ought to be checked out, because it's pretty bad. And I'm sure, without mentioning the address, whoever goes down there can spot it without any trouble. That should be looked into.
I noticed there was, there was a constituent that brought up a dead tree on Main Street. And I noticed that down there on South Ash, there's also a fairly substantial dead tree along the, along the sidewalk there that probably needs to be addressed as well.
On Ash Street?
Was there anything else, Barney?
No, that's it.
Okay, Councilman Driggers?
I don't have anything today.
Yeah, we, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to have been working on, you know, a handful of projects, and, and we do. There are, there are a good handful of projects that are currently underway in terms of code enforcement. And, and I think some are going, gonna be moving into the legal, legal realm here pretty quickly, so. You know, it's, it's a, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle, and, you know, it's one that, you know, as we, as we think about, you know, and that's something that's been rattled around in my head for a while now, is, you know, we talked about, we had the kids working on like the murals and some of the downtown beautification, but what kind of programming, you know, could we be promoting that would encourage homeowners to, you know, keep their property looking nice and improved? I mean, let's, let's, let's face it, I mean, there's people out there that struggle to make ends meet, that, that struggle, you know, not, not even so much with money sometimes, but time, you know, raising a family and, and kids and all the activities that go, that are associated with that. So it makes it more of a challenge, you know, to do a lot of, sometimes those, those exterior things that, that go along with being a property owner. But, you know, maybe there's something we can think about, you know, because as part of our housing, you know, that's part of our, one of our strategic goals is housing and, you know, making sure that our housing is, is, is appropriate and, 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 you know, helps, you know, because that just helps everybody's property value around, you know, in the neighborhoods, you know. If we can help people, encourage people to keep their property looking, looking right, then I think that's not just a benefit for the city, but for all the residents around it, so.
How about the people that have lots and lots of rental houses, you know, and some of them don't seem, is that something we should address maybe?
Well, you know, that's always a challenge, you know, with, with absentee landlords and, you know, the things that we're talking about, you know, in terms that are going to, going to legal and in, you know, and, and this other property on Main Street, you know, are absentee landlords. And, you know, it's, I think sometimes we have a problem with, that's one of our, you know, when you prioritize it, that's some of the hardest problems to deal with is when you have absentee landlords, and, you know, just trying to communicate with them sometimes is, is almost impossible, so. It's a challenge at, at the best.
It is.
Yeah. Okay, anything else that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.